It is now six twelve and we will reconvene our regular meeting. Chancellor Head, do you have any introductions, special guests?
Yes.
You recognize tonight?
Let me start with Gerald Napolos. Thank you Gerald for hosting us and you want to introduce a couple of your ambassadors.
I would like to introduce a couple of our ambassadors, actually four of them, one had to leave, but we have Mr. Jonah Navarro, Christian Nelson, Ruth Oganawa, Cynthia Perez, and Victoria Nguyen had to go to work. So Dr. Head, Dr. Smith, and members of the board, these are our members of our student ambassadors who are here for special occasions, but they also represent members of our activities team as well as student government and they have really high GPAs, so. They represent why we do the work that we do.
Yeah, and I tell you, Dr. Napolos, I am impressed when I see those students, the type, the way they look, the way they behave, their courtesy, their professionalism, and the whole shooting match, and I'm proud of all of the things that you've done to make those students the type of students that they are. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Rebecca Stevenson is the advisor, but also for Dr. Head and Rebecca's back there.
Stand up Rebecca. Stand up.
So I just want, I just want the board to also know that Christian is also our student government president, and he had almost a full ride to Lamar, a baseball scholarship, but he chose, he chose to come to Lone Star College.
You know, Dr. Head is an alumnus of Lamar, so you better, you better really go down there and show out.
So it's Ken Lloyd.
Ken Lloyd, I'm sorry Ken.
You all do know I used to be the president here, right? You don't know that? Yeah. Glad you're here. Okay, so I'd like to introduce the new faculty senate presidents, and if you would stand when I call your name so that the board knows who you are. So Davitia Guillory from North Carolina. Those are all the faculty senate presidents cheering for each other, but Roger Chambers from Kingwood. We had referred to him as Anthony in another, I think the convocation we had, it's Roger, and Donna Willingham from Tomball. And Dave Gier from University Park. I'd also like to introduce Dr. Dwight Smith, who is our new vice chancellor for academic success. Dwight. And next I'd like to introduce Sylpa Keshfala, who is, we have a special presentation, these are students who were involved in the NASA project, so.
Good evening, Chancellor, Dr. Smith, members of the board. On behalf of the administration, faculty, and staff at Lone Star College Sci Fair, I'm just absolutely excited to share with you an amazing accomplishment by a group of our students. But before I introduce our students who are here with us today, I of course want to provide you with a little bit of context. So Lone Star College is a member of the Texas NASA Space Grant Consortium, and as a part of that membership, our students are afforded the opportunity to participate in what is called the Micro-G Next Challenge, which is a challenge that is open to both two-year and four-year member institutions. And teams that are selected to participate in this challenge are asked to design, build, and test a device for NASA that addresses a current space exploration challenge. Test operations are then conducted in the simulated microgravity environment at NASA's Johnson Space Center Neutral Buoyancy Laboratory. Lone Star College Sci Fair was the only community college in the nation to participate in the spring 2018 Micro-G Next Challenge, and they competed against some of the most prestigious four-year universities in the nation such as Cornell University, Columbia University, Purdue University, and UCLA, just to name a few. For most students, participation in the challenge was a part of the requirements of a three-credit hour course. However, our students' participation in this challenge was strictly voluntary and not part of any course or requirement. In fact, all five of our students devoted countless hours of their own time to participate in the challenge. So what was the specific project that they worked on as part of the Micro-G Next 2018 Challenge? It's this. They were asked, all of the teams were asked to design and manufacture a device for NASA that can cut and retain a zip tie during extra vehicular activity in microgravity. So here, in just a moment, is going to be a video that shows the device that was created and designed by our students for this challenge, and in the second part of the video actually shows their prototype device being tested by divers at the Neutral Buoyancy Laboratory at NASA. Could you play the video, please? And there's some... There's volume with that, I'm not sure where it is, but you get it. Yes. Because we know, we know the volume works, we tested it.
Don't feel bad. I had this happen to me and I was at a national conference and I could not get my thing to play.
Well, we can, if you don't mind, just rewinding it, I mean, we can kind of get the gist of it and I can, it's got, it's got captions so folks can read it, but this is their device that they created, it's called a click cutter. They called it a click cutter, it functions like a pen, so on the far right you can see what they've created, and they actually have the prototype with them today, with them today, so if you want to take a look at it, you can, you can see it. So that's what they created. And then this is the testing phase where the divers were actually testing their device. So you see in their, in the audience, those are our students, and James here is giving directions to the diver. So he says, "Could you apply a little force by pulling gently away to the diver?" And the diver, "Copy, pulling away."
So those are our...
Those are our students directing the divers. Yes.
That's them, right there.
And I wish, I wish it was volume, because you wouldn't even think that James is a student, James, I thought James was a NASA person, but James is giving directions to the diver. "Copy, going into the bag." And now here's the diver asking, Jim's giving directions.
So just so I'm clear about this, they're practicing this in the water for the weightlessness for space, in preparation for space.
Yes.
I thought diver was the guy's name for a second.
The NASA diver. So he cuts the zip tie, cuts all five of the zip ties, puts it in the bag, Jim is still giving directions.
Finagle it.
Finagle it a little bit, I'm sure that's a NASA term. Looks great, "Go ahead and put it in the trash bag." And then the test is concluded. And so the diver says, "Awesome test guys, it's really, really awesome," but what's fascinating is what the diver says next, and then, and we have the next slide here. This is some of the accolades, "Twenty-minute test, all eleven zip ties were cut, praises from the diver, I'm impressed, it's a great little tool, works really well, cut like butter, looks like Apple made it. You guys are true engineers." So never in the four-year history of the NASA Micro-G Next Challenge has a device been selected to be sent to the International Space Station, until now. So I am pleased to announce that the Lone Star College Sci Fair's team's device has been selected to be sent to the International Space Station in spring of 2019. So please join me in congratulating our LSC Sci Fair students, their faculty advisors, we have one of our deans who's here with us today, and also our NASA partner is here with us today. So when I call your name, could you please come and come by the podium? James Philippi, Daniel Vasek, Francesca Liso, Maria Gonzalez, and our fifth student, Sean Palmer, couldn't be here today, but he did want to be here, so he's the fifth student. We also have Dr. Yihong Wang, who's our professor of engineering. We also have Jared Cammon, who's our professor of engineering technology, and we have our, one of our deans, Dr. Claire Phillips here today, and we also have Katie Livingwood, who's NASA Micro-G Next Coordinator with us today. Let's give a round of applause.
Just real quick, when you saw on the video a guy in the astronaut suit, that is an actual astronaut, Chris Cassidy, he was testing our device, so, he was not a diver. But we have prototypes here, this is a 3D printed prototype, it is fully functional, it's a little bit fragile, this is only half of what the final metal prototype should look like, but...
Can I talk to, to the students, just for a little bit? So I know this is not a required course or anything like that, so what made you be part of this?
Well, for me personally, I was part of the science and engineering, I was part of the science and engineering club, and I was encouraged by my mentors to get involved on campus, and so I heard about this project, however, I heard that Professor Wang has a very selective, she's very selective with her group, but I decided to go ahead and try to get into the group. One of the other group members asked me in the fall, because one of the other members couldn't participate, so I stepped in for their shoes, and I've been on the team since then, and it's, for me, it was just an opportunity that Lone Star offered me and it allowed me to explore my curiosity in engineering, so.
Excellent.
Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Katie Livinggood, the Micro-G Next Coordinator for NASA Johnson Space Center, and we are so excited for this team and their tool to launch the station next spring. We really, Micro-G Next is an activity that really integrates your students into, into the technology development pathway for new NASA space exploration solutions, and we look forward to their ingenuity every year. And so I also, in addition to Micro-G Next, we also have other activities that are out of the Johnson Space Center Office of Education. I brought a couple of flyers and I'd like to leave them at the door for everyone. We've got, which we have, actually have a history with Lone Star doing the National Community College Aerospace Scholars Program. We have a new coding challenge for those who are more computer science literate, and, and then we have a, a tech transfer activity that is new this year. So we look forward to seeing all of your students in one of our activities soon.
Great.
Can I just, may I ask one second?
You may have.
I wanted to put you on picture up here.
Oh.
There we go.
Oh, okay. You may have said this already, and I don't recall it, but I saw this list of universities that were involved, you know, in this project, and I saw our college involved. What was the selection criteria for, number one's my first question, and I'm, I'm real proud, you know, that Lone Star is among the best, which I know is true anyway. And our second lane, I'm stepping across the line, and I hope this was not in the Chronicle early because I missed it, but I, I would love to see stuff like this showing up in the news media, and, but, that's not my call though, so.
And they were, there were several, there were several news articles that had come out.
Oh, really?
Because this has been going on for two semesters, in fact, all semester in the spring. But I'm going to let one of them talk about the actual criteria.
Okay.
So each challenge, so last year there are four challenges given to the students, and so they could pick one, they obviously chose the zip tie cutter. Each of the challenge has roughly 12 to 15 requirements that the EVA Management Office puts forth, and their proposals are based upon how well their tool fits those criteria, as well as how feasible the EVA Management Office thinks that that tool would be.
Good job, thank you.
So, do you want them to go ahead and do the other three for you?
Then, great. We have a new team this, this year, we have a new group of students, just doesn't have, they're all excited.
Maybe we need more than one.
We do, and if I could just brag on the two, our two faculty members, so Dr. Wang is over engineering and Professor Cammon is over engineering technology, and they really have collaborated and married these two disciplines so that different, our students could participate, and it's just, it's, and when I talk with the students, you talk about what helped them be successful, it's the, it's the things that they were, they were staying modeled by their faculty, and so the collaboration, you know, the hard work, the dedication, the extra hours, all of that, so definitely huge praise to our dean and of course our faculty for their leadership.
Right. You indicated that the prototype was 3D printed, were you able to use the same coding to produce the metal, the final?
In terms of manufacturing the metal prototype, we actually were partnered with a manufacturing shop that, we talked to them and proposed our, our project, and they helped us out and covered the funding for machining the full metal prototype, which was very helpful and helped us a lot with our success on the project.
But they had, was it, not 3D, but was it machined?
It...
Robotically?
It was, it was, we did not use the same methods that 3D printers use, we used CNC machines to machine it out of aluminum 2024, which we thought was the best material for our application.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, good job, proud of you.
Thank you. So next, thank you students and faculty, I know being faculty and takes a lot of work, doesn't it, to do this, yeah. So I'd like to bring up Leanne Nutt and Nicole Robinson to thank Lynn LeBeuf, who is the CEO of the Tomball Regional Health Foundation. Lynn, you have to, you have to come up. The, they have provided over $1 million in gifts to our students through our foundation, so.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Head, members of the board and, and the audience, it really is a pleasure to introduce my friend Lynn LeBeuf to you and to say thank you tonight, to him and to the Tomball Regional Health Foundation for a major milestone, and that is the gift of more than $1 million to Lone Star College, specifically $1,212,000, 200, $1,212,244.58 to Lone Star College Tomball, to be exact. So Lynn is joining us tonight, and I want to give you just a quick example of how some of that money has been used. It's been scholarships, equipment, salaries, et cetera, and this is just a brief snapshot of the way the money has made a difference. For the last five years, that money has funded a nursing instructor retention specialist that has taught at least 90 associate degree nursing students in clinicals, 190 students in a lab, has logged more than 370 contact hours in one-on-one lunch and learn sessions with students. As a result of that, since 2014, the exit exam scores in our nursing programs have increased significantly, with the average board exam passing rate at 96%, with our vocational nursing pass rate at 100%. They have created the Elmer Lee Beckendorf Memorial Nursing Endowment, which funds a two-year nursing scholarship each year, and they have funded six of those so far. As a result of their gift, Lone Star College Tomball Pharmacy Technology Program is one of only two accredited in the state of Texas as a community college by the Accreditation Council for Pharmacy Education that provides certified training for pharmacists and pharmacy technicians in IV sterile compound training. And it, it just goes on and on. And we have given them a, just a very small, but meaningful and heartfelt token of our appreciation for all that they have done to make a difference for our college, for our community, and for our students, and we appreciate all of their generosity. They have given generously, and we appreciate you Lynn, very, very much, and the best gift of all is that you have made a difference, and we thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
So, so we're going to do a picture somehow, I don't...
How are you going to do it? You want to do it now?
Okay, you want to do it in front of you guys?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Bill's on. Stand up. We'll step right here. If you stand right in between them.
You want, uh, board members behind?
Yeah, I can kind of stretch your skirt, if you'd have a word.
You know Lynn, you need to say a few words to the group. You need to say a few words to the, to the group.
I was kind of prepared for that.
Oh, you are?
You know, our, back when I was CEO at Tomball Regional Medical Center, our chairman of our board was Helmer Beckendorf, and he was our mentor, and as we sold the hospital and created the foundation, I can still hear his, his words echoing that investment in education is an investment in the future, and it's the best investment you can do. And that's been the philosophy of our board, and that's been the philosophy, it should be philosophy for everybody in this room, to invest in education, it's investment in the future, and these are people that's going to be taking care of us when we're all...
Absolutely.
So, thank you very much. We, we look forward to a longstanding relationship.
Well, thank you for all that you've done and what you plan to do in the future.
Thank you. Thank you Lynn. I didn't, I don't know whether Leanne said, did she announce that he, he's the treasurer of the foundation board?
No.
Yeah, okay. He knows his stuff, I sat next to him in the foundation board meeting, so, thank you again. So we've got a couple of other announcements here, we have an election on November the 6th, District 1 is Mike Stoma and George Edwards, and I don't know who's here or not. I saw George Edwards here, I'm not sure Mike Stoma is here, and Ernestine Pierce is District 2, and Matthew Wheeler, is Matthew here? Nope, okay, and Ernestine, I don't think. Number 3 is Mike Sullivan and Guillermo Puente, and I don't know whether either one are here. Okay, so that's November the 6th. We have some, a couple of enrollment updates. One is, let me just tell you where we are today, we are minus one in credit and we're minus three in contact hours, and that to me is directly related to the hurricane. So in districts, just, just a quick figures here, in districts, almost 83%, out of districts, 13.6, a little, almost 14, internationals, 2.5, and out of state is .2. We are 56% female and 44 male, we are 40% Hispanic, 31% white, 14%, almost 15% black, 7, almost 8% Asian, and then other and multiple are 6.5. So official day will be on Monday, Monday?
Say 12.
12th of September?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that Monday? Is it 12th class days or 10th class days? 12th class day is what I thought, okay. Anyway, official day's coming up soon, and, yeah. So we have, I'd like to show, we have some good news, I think, on where we are with graduation and especially with minority students, and if we can put that up on the slide, guys. So this just came out this week, so this is where we are, and so you can see all disciplines, five, I think that's where we were before, a couple of years ago, we were number four?
Number four.
Say it again?
Six.
Last time.
Last time we were six.
Oh, number, we were number six before, okay. Hispanics, we were number six, and African-Americans, two years ago, we were 16, and then it jumped up to 20, and now we're down to 12. And keep in mind that this is over 1,100 community colleges, so we're, we're close to the, to the top 1.5% or so, so I'm very pleased with that. We still, a couple of things, we're working very hard for everyone to improve student success, and we've actually had steady, just, we've had about a percentage point every year of improving student success, and the graduation numbers are really high now, so, and the transfer, we transfer almost 17,000 students every year, I think we graduated close to 8,000 students this past year. So we're still making progress, we still have a ways to go, and do you have any?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments that I would, would like to make. I know a couple of years ago, we were concerned with the achievement levels of all of our students, but more particularly with African-American, you know, we were 16th in the nation, then jumped up to 20th. And the thing that I am very, very proud of is that 12th is not where we want to be, but jumping eight places in a relatively short period of time, I think is tremendous progress. And I really don't know who to thank, so I'm going to thank all of the individuals, teachers, professors, and Quentin got involved, and a whole bunch of folks were involved, and we really appreciate the effort that you have extended, you know, to make sure that we continue to be the premier college, and that one day we hope to be number one in all categories. We understand that none of us are miracle workers, so we can't do it overnight, but to me, as long as we make sustained improvement, we're getting our job done, and it's almost like a football team, if you're not number one every year, people worry about you. So we want to continue to make progress until we get to be number one, and then we want to sustain that particular momentum. And again, thanks to all of you, I know it's tough sometimes, but you've made the effort, the effort is paying off, and don't rest on your laurels, because we order our kids to continue to be good and to be the best of the best. Thank you so much for your hard work.
We have another report coming in the next, probably next month. Quentin Wright's been working on the African-American initiative, and I think we know we've been making, you should see some improvement over that because of efforts that all, all of the colleges have been making, all of our locations, so we'll have Quentin come in and give a report at the next board meeting, talk about where we are, and I think we're going to be, we'll rise in those rankings, or we'll go low in those rankings, so.
Yeah, now you said it's like 1,500 community colleges.
There's a little over 1,100, 1,500 or something like that.
Yeah, you know, yeah, those numbers are good, you know, when you look at the overall number, but we want to get better.
So one last thing I have for the board, these are two big issues for us, on September the 12th and September the 19th, on two different committees, I've been asked to come in and testify at the state legislature at different committees. So the first one on September the 12th is on dual credit, and maybe you don't know this, but the, been a lot of questions. but, so I'm testifying about that. Our students do better than native students, and they do better than any other students from, transferring from community colleges, when they transfer, if they went through dual credit with us. So the challenge that we see, we still see it, is there's a, what I, what's called an equity gap, that Anglos still do a little better in dual credit than African-American and Hispanic students, and so we're aware of that, and it all fits in with what you see right here, so we're gonna be working on that also. On September the nineteenth, I've been asked to come down before another house, and I'll say come down, they're meeting in Corpus Christi, to talk about the impact of the hurricane and what the state did or didn't do, and how they could improve their services. So that's on September the nineteenth. And on September the twenty-first, I'm part of a small group with TAC, there's four of us, five of us, that will meet with the governor's staff to talk about community college policies and practices, and we're, there's another committee that's meeting with the governor's staff on safety and security. I will tell you, and I think I mentioned this before, we, we're, we're at the top of that list when it comes to everything that's being done. Mario and the police, and I don't know whether Chief Willingham is in here right now, I don't think he is, but we've been really focused on safety and security issues, and a lot of the colleges have asked for our information to see what we're doing, so we're, you know, we're, we're thought of very highly in all those, all those areas. I will share the information on dual credit with you, though, I think you're gonna find it really good information, so... And that is all I, do we have any other introductions, Helen? Okay.
Jennifer.
Yes, we have a workshop. Our workshop, some of you had asked, over a period of time, about our energy usage and how we go about all that, and I asked Jennifer to work with her group and put together a presentation. Keep in mind that, and she's gonna talk about the square footage that we have, we have the five and a half million or so usable, then seven altogether, counting parking lots, something like that, but we are a very large, our total expenses this year are gonna be at five hundred and thirty million overall, so we're a very large organization, and I think it's, when you look at this, I think you'll see what kind of work goes into the utilities and how we're, we're actually spending about the same amount of money that we did five years ago, something like that?
Yes.
I'll let you, I'm giving your talk, but go ahead.
Yeah, so, thank you. Good evening, just wanted to give an overview of utility management at Lone Star College. So just some highlights, I'm gonna get to some more details here shortly, but just some highlights is, the Texas Higher Education Institute did do a survey and has ranked us in the top twenty percent for energy efficiency, and since two thousand and fifteen, our costs have gone down one point two percent, even though our square footage has grown by five point three percent. So on a net basis, our utility costs have actually decreased six point five percent when you account for the fact that we've grown in square footage. We continue to do work with getting savings through various contracts, so there's four point one million of savings that we're looking to achieve between fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty-three, and we also continue to generate revenue, and I'll, in a later slide, mention some of the specific programs that goes into that. We also continue to take the revenues generated and reinvest them back into energy efficiency projects. So the goal here is, and the, the goal is that in two thousand and twenty-three, even as we continue to add square footage, that we expect the budget for utility costs to be about the same, even as we continue to grow. So just to give an idea of what we have, is this is for calendar year two thousand and seventeen. Our utility expenditures was eight point five million. We generally budget around nine million, 'cause that's on the fiscal year, not on the calendar year basis, that's the difference there. But on the calendar year basis for two thousand and seventeen, the expenditures were eight point five million. Eighty-four percent of this is electricity, followed by water and sewer at eleven percent, and natural gas at three point two percent. Although, even though it's at eleven percent, water and sewer, I think water is the fastest growing utility cost that we see here. So this chart is to show you where our costs on a monthly basis have been over the past five years. So each line is a different year, and the thicker line, the sort of the thick, dark, blue line, is two thousand and seventeen. And I think that's why it's interesting to see that, even though we have grown in square footage, you can see that at the bottom, in two thousand and thirteen, from four point nine five million square feet to five point two two million square feet in two thousand and seventeen, you can see our utility costs have not increased. We're right on top of these prior year lines. And this is where I do wanna mention too, I know sometimes in other presentations, I've mentioned Lone Star College having seven million square feet, and the difference is the, primarily the parking garages, storage sheds, other things that use little to no energy, so we exclude them from here for benchmarking purposes. But so, we're very excited that we've really kept utility costs stable. This chart shows by campus. So, I mean, it's pretty much what you expect, is the larger campuses are the higher ones, the light blue is Cyfair, yellow is North Harris, so this just shows you where our campuses stand. University Park, that line, we did make adjustments to remove from there some, the buildings there that are not for academic use. And this, this chart shows some of that benchmarking that has been looked at. I mentioned the Texas Higher Education Institute that surveyed different colleges and universities, and ranked us in the top five and the top twenty percent for overall energy efficiency. So this is a, a deep, more detailed level breakdown of some of the programs that I mentioned. So the electricity contracts, that we have an electrical contract with the Texas General Land Office, and that contract runs until June of two thousand and twenty-three, but through that contract, by, the purchase of the electricity through there, we're looking at four point one million worth of savings. And then as we go down through, also the, so the load management programs, what that really is, is through, through Entergy and CPE, or CenterPoint, we reduce our energy consumption during high-power demand periods, and that results in savings back from CenterPoint and Entergy for us participating in this program. And so it's, and similar for the, the energy sales at the bottom, so there at Cyfair, North Harrison, Tomball, they have chilled water tanks ranging from seven hundred and fifty thousand to one point five million gallons of storage. And what we do is we use that to sell power back to the energy supplier, and they, and they pay us some revenue for that, for participating in that, but because we have those storage tanks, it really does not have an operational effect on the campuses. So we are able to achieve savings through that program as well. And so as I mentioned earlier, we take a lot of these revenues generated from these savings programs and reinvest them back into energy savings projects, they're sort of projects set up by campus. So LED lighting, irrigation controls, and we, we try to make sure that it's a three-year payback period for each project. And then finally, just to kinda give you guys an idea of how we look at all of this and keep track of all of this, is we do use a database called Energy CAP. And we use that to monitor all of our costs, all of our consumptions, and it also manages for us the bill payments, reporting, and benchmarking. And if we could, from here, if we could pull up the spreadsheet, I just...
I ask her to show you all the, this is an older spreadsheet, but this is the work that goes into what we do.
And this one is not the older spreadsheet, this is the current fiscal year nineteen budget.
Can you blow that up a little bit? Yeah, thank you.
So, I mean, again, yeah, this is to kinda show how much detail we have behind the scenes.
Guys, go over, so we can see what the headers are. Okay.
So we have this electric, utility budget by electric, gas, water, by campus, by center.
Go all the way to the top, so we can see the, so we can see the...
Column title.
The column, what's up there.
And by month. Oh, so this is fiscal year eighteen. So this is all the detail we have in the background, and this is just a small piece, there's a lot of other charts and graphs also that we utilize as well to track everything. And here in particular, I want to thank the Energy Sustainability Director, George Keeler. He, he loves all the stuff, and he does great work with all of it, and is always very happy to mention the savings and revenue generation that he gets us through a lot of these programs. George is here.
Okay.
This is George Keeler, Energy Sustainability Director. So, thank you very much.
I want her to, I want you to see this, because it's not just with this, it's with everything we do, how complicated it is, and how much work goes in to making this come out right. This is what all goes into putting our budgets together and making sure that we run very efficiently. So, thank you, George. I know a lot, I know a lot of work goes into this. I'm very proud of the fact that we're adding all this square footage, and we're pretty well holding the line on our utility costs, which is, with modern, modern efficiencies, that's probably what we should be doing, but we're still adding a lot of square footage, so...
Yes.
And the colleges are helping a lot, we know that, oh, thank you. And I looked at the charts, I didn't see anything unusual about the electricity usage at your colleges, by the way, or you've already received a telephone call, so we're, we're good with that.
Yeah.
What, have you looked any further at solar? What's, what's the latest in the, the payback time on going solar for electric generation?
I honestly, I have not looked at that recently. I know part of it is we have the electricity contract with the General Land Office through two thousand and twenty-three.
When we've, when we've talked to architects, there's a significant cost upfront if we're gonna have to put something in there. Now, I do think, and I know from talking to a couple of you, that we have some areas where solar would make some sense. For example, over at Westway Park, where the parking lot is outside, and I've seen other colleges that do that, where they use that to light the parking areas, and that's, that's simple to put in, it's slow maintenance. We haven't, the, the cost is considerable, we know that from talking to architects, if we did it in regular buildings, so I do think that there's some usage for it. But we wanna make sure we know what we're doing before we go there. We had, we're tied up with the, with our contract through two thousand and twenty-three right now, so it's gonna have to be on some new facilities, or we add on to like the parking, the parking areas. If, when we go to Westway Park, you'll see they've got covered parking outside, 'cause we bought that building, which we normally don't do.
Right.
But there's some areas where I think we could use, so...
You know, Jennifer, when you first started talking, you mentioned how we were ranked. Did you say top twenty percent or...
Yes, top twenty percent in energy efficiency.
Okay. Well, some, you know, you know the names of the...
No, I asked the same question, but it, the Higher Education Institute that does the survey doesn't release the names of the colleges and universities surveyed, so, no, we don't know who they've compared us against. But, no, yeah, we're, we were ranked top, top five, uh, top twenty percent for energy efficiency.
Yeah, no problem, don't look, I'm just curious who some of the folks were, but it's not that important.
Yeah, no, I'm, I asked the same question.
Okay.
Yeah.
But our average is a dollar, it's about a dollar thirty per square foot, something like that. Does that sound right, George? Dollar twenty-five, that's about what it is in your house, actually, so...
George, my question would be, that you break it down in BTUs per square foot?
Part of our benchmarking exercise is we will go do a BTU, so if we compare one building to another, we'll break it down on a BTU basis, because we have a mix, so at one campus, such as Cyfair or UP, they are very heavy energy users, electricity, very small natural gas. The other campuses, like here at North Harris, consume a lot of natural gas, further, rather than... We do, we are contacted periodically about firms, we, we have four or five a year that contact us that can give us a better deal. We do take a look at those. I mean, we are locked in on contract, but if they, they always tell us they can give us a better deal than what we have, we will take a look at it, but it's gotta be a better deal than what we have, and so far, we haven't seen any of that. Market has not shown a better deal yet.
Thank you, and George and I did not talk about this in advance, so I'll just tell...
Who, who does the surveys? I'm just trying to get a feel, when they, who, who actually comes in and surveys the buildings and do the energy audit or energy survey?
The first one you had, where it says we're ranked, where'd that come from?
Yeah, that is the, it is the Texas Higher Education Institution, who surveyed twenty-seven, here's the note, twenty-seven colleges and universities, and we ranked fifth out of those twenty-seven for energy efficiency.
Those colleges, because confidentiality, they would not give us names. However, we do see a chart where they're located, and interesting, you'll see four or five colleges happens to be in the Houston area, here's three or four colleges just happens to be in the Austin area, there's a place up in Lovett, there's a place in... So, maybe we might know where some of those colleges are.
Yeah, my, just out of curiosity, having worked for GE, I'm wondering if we've ever considered bringing in someone with that type of expertise to do that survey? 'Cause, 'cause right now, I would say with solar, just off the top of my head, with solar, you, you're gonna come out advantageously, somewhere around thirty percent. And I'm just, just letting you know that, that...
Well, from a solar perspective, part of what's happening in the United States with current issues with China, there is some confusion where the cost of solar panels are gonna go, and so that has created a marketplace issue of what we've seen in the last probably five to seven years, a significant drop in the efficiency of the panels. The expectations are we are going to see significant improvement on solar panels. And so we could probably do a seven or ten-year payback, but I think by the time we get into the two thousand and twenties, we could definitely be very cost competitive to buy power off the grid.
Were you ever involved with it? There was two organizations, I think, that contacted Lone Star about donating panels.
That would be great, but we, we have worked with entities with, on solar panels at Montgomery, trying to get a grant there. We have, I'm trying, I don't remember the one entity we did work with and talk to about solar panels, but if you have names, I would...
Okay, because they, they, that was presented to some people about a year ago, 'cause they were saying that they were willing to donate these panels, provided Lone Star would do a training classes on solar, so...
It's a great connection for energy, training, workforce, opportunity. We'd love to do that.
Okay.
All right. Mary, you had a question also today?
Yes. When you talk about the Texas, I'm sorry, the General Land Office, what do you mean by having a contract with them?
It's a contract through the General, George, I don't know if you can give more specifics there, but the, the contract is through them for electricity.
George, 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 you may need to speak into the mic, I don't know what they know.
Yes, please, come on, please. I think you can see why, how very excited I am to have George on our team.
Oh, absolutely.
The Texas Gen, uh, General Land Office is run by Mr. Bush, it's part of the state agency, and, and so we've worked with them, part of the reason we work with them, because we feel it kinda goes into our mission as well. Any revenue they get above what we paid for the energy, ends up going back into K through twelve schools. So the Texas General Land Office is a neutral, they do not make any money, it goes to our public schools. And so that's a very positive thing with the Texas General Land... schools. And so, that's a very positive thing with the Texas General Land Office. The other issue with them is, they have the best price. And, and the best terms and conditions.
Because when you, when you talk about, no, 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 when you talk about electricity and utility, I automatically think of the Public Utility Commission, not the General Land Office. So, that's why I was like confused as to why contract with the General Land Office.
So, the General Land Office has a wholesale, they can sell power and natural gas to public institutions in the state. The TUC, Public Utility Commission, they are the ones who regulate power utilities in the state. And so, they don't, we follow their rules. General Land Office also has to follow their rules in selling and buying power. So, that's the interconnection. But, they are still two different agencies within the state of Texas.
They were considerably, when we did this several years ago, they were considerably under market for what we saw from other companies that were off. We, we went out for bids on this, and I don't know what year that was, maybe, I don't know if it was before I was the chancellor or after.
This late, before you were chancellor, Lone Star did convert to Texas General Land Office.
Right.
And then, I believe it was the end of last year.
We.
Two thousand sixteen, we went back and saw this opportunity, when market prices were so low, to go and get.
I don't think most people do know that, by the way. You're not the only one. I did not know until we did that original contract, that the land office was involved in this. They're more or less a.
I honestly had no idea. And I worked for the state, and I had no idea about, you know, what the general, I had a sense of what they do, you know, with the whole hurricane stuff.
Well, I have to tell you, though, for us, that's, to me, that's the best way to go, especially when they have the lowest price. That solves that problem. But, when we're dealing with state agencies like that, that keeps everything nice and clean. And that, to me, that, that's the way we want to go. I think that puts us in a really good position to, when people come to us, that's, you got to beat that price. I mean, I mean, I would tell all of you, whether it be solar, or wind, or anything else, and we've had people approaching us about putting wind out here. I'm going, well, you can't put anything out here because of the airport, so we don't have a lot of wind blowing out here all the time. But, if we thought we could do better than what we would, we would take a very close look at it and see whether or not that's feasible, and what the payout would be. Because everything is the return on the investment that we do these days. So, we'll take a look at everything, I mean, as it comes up. But, we're relying on people that know what they're doing. And I'm, I'm speaking about you. We're relying on you, because we know what you're doing.
No pressure. Good job, George.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you very much.
George, I'm impressed with you. Okay, anything else, Jennifer? Okay. Board members, at this point, we need to approve the minutes of the August second workshop and regular meeting. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Second.
Any questions, comments? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Chancellor, you, you have given some of your comments and reports. Any additional, any additional comments?
No.
If not, Dr. Shaw Ardalona, are you ready?
Good evening, everyone. Board of Trustees, Chancellorhead. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting on behalf of the President. So, I will make it as quick as possible. As you know, we exist because of the community. We are here to serve the community, and the community is doing a lot for us. Tonight, I'm going to share a few examples of how we give back to the community, our faculty, staff, and students, what they're doing for our community. And this is just a sampling. Well, it is no secret that Cyfair is into research, so there is, this is another project for, also our college, Cyfair, that faculty and students are helping their community to get one of their cemeteries on the World Heritage Record by UNESCO. So, again, the Cyfair students and faculty have spent hundreds of hours to help to make this happen for the community.
Where is this?
Cyfair.
I mean, but where's the?
Cemetery.
Where's the cemetery?
It's a cemetery in Olive Wood. I don't know exactly where that is.
Okay.
It's close to.
Okay.
Okay, let's be in that.
Well, with all that Kingwood has been through, I know that Chancellor has provided a comprehensive report, a report on all the food pantries and everything that each of our campuses are doing. But, I just wanted to mention that Kingwood has been always a leader. And in fact, they started the first community food fair in 2015. And all of us together, we have had over thirteen hundred volunteers and have helped over six, seven thousand six hundred, uh, community members. Well, North Harris is, is, again, is creative. And as you can see, that they, they celebrate a Toys for, the Blue Santa. And also, with North Harris and Victory, they participated in the Juneteenth Parade with Mayor Turner, and they served barbecue to over two thousand individuals. And again, many happy families around here. Montgomery is, is again, very much focused also on the community and faculty and staff. Each time, I mean, faculty and students, they select five community and, and non-for-profit organizations, and the students present a proposal for them, and the winner gets five hundred dollars. And according to Montgomery, that, again, the five hundred dollars is one thing, but the experience that students go through is priceless, because they make formal presentations, and they like, and they help their nonprofit organizations in the community. Well, Tomball and University Park has started, have started to, to do a lot of things together in the past three, four years. And one thing that we do is to celebrate a day, the community, and this last time, over a hundred people participated. You see Dr. Nutt at the very front. And again, whatever it takes to serve our communities, is it storytelling, we'll do it. If it's garden and store cleaning, we'll do it. And again, we're out there with the community, helping them. Our faculty, staff, students, and administrators are participating.
Who is the person pushing that topsoil?
That's Dr. Nutt, leading from the front, the center, and the back. University Park has been very focused on children. It's, again, we, our students did a toy drive, and they, they helped several families last year. We also adopted a elementary school, and, and faculty and staff delivered over three hundred and fifty books. It's last time, and we continue to do that. A year or so ago, we did a nine-one-one bears that we donated over twelve hundred bears to, to police officers to have in their cars to give to kids. And you see two familiar faces on one of these pictures. Again, the health of the community is important to us. Every thirty-four seconds, somebody has a heart attack. Every forty seconds, somebody has a stroke. And again, we are interested in the health of our community. We have been hosting the American Heart Walk, and each time, over three to four thousand people show up on campus. Cyfair, Tomball are also participants. For us, University Park raised over fifty thousand dollars, but the event so far has raised over seven hundred thousand dollars for the four years. Next one is October twenty-seventh, and I look forward to seeing all of you to walk with us and our students and our dogs.
Yes.
Again, once again, we are here for our community. We serve the community. And again, we exist for the community, and we're proud to serve them. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Good job.
Any questions or comments concerning the report? If not.